Okay. Yes.
Wow, that is a big difference.
Yeah.
How are you?
No, just raspberry. Ice cream.
Oh, ice cream. Sounds like I did.
He's helping an ice cream shop.
Surface of the parking space.
Okay.
Because they have seventy seven paved with concrete and the rest are gravel.
Okay.
Flex space.
That's a good reason.
And our technical standards say that the minimum has to be paved with concrete or asphalt. Then any of the excess can be flexed. So if we consider ninety nine the minimum, if we did, and they'd have to pave those ninety nine minimum. And the rest of up to that two hundred twenty three could be the flex rates. We don't have to pave like a huge swath of ground. So that's where our technical standards say, and I didn't catch that in my first view.
Okay. Their minimum spaces not nearly this.
No, just to try that separately. So we'll bring that up.
Okay.
Thank you for talking to me about.
You're welcome. Everybody ready? Okay, we will open the meeting on February the seventh, twenty twenty four at seven P M. Please stand for the flag. Um, do we have anyone signed up? Okay, we will move on to approval of the minutes. If you notice, you have at your seat a corrected on a couple of words.
Yeah, the Bartonville.
Yes. So you will be voting on that that's corrected, not what's in your packet. Do I have a motion?
I vote that we, you know, they didn't see anything here we needed to think. I vote that we approve the minutes with the corrections stated.
All in favor?
Wait a second.
What? Oops. Second. Sorry. All in favor?
Madam Chair, since we only, since we're missing two, should both the alternates?
Yes.
So both alternates will be voting members tonight.
All right. I didn't say opposed because everybody said yay. All right, public hearing number one, well, actually not. We're going to discuss and make recommendation regarding a preliminary plat for a one hundred one point four six seven acre property situated in the Daniel Cook Survey Abstract Number Two Three Zero and A M Feltes Survey Abstract Number Fifteen Ninety Four in the town of Bartonville, Denton County, Texas. The property is located on the north side of East Jeter Road, approximately two thousand one hundred eighty five feet east of the intersection of East Jeter Road and Country Court in Bartonville, Texas. The applicant is Mike Koski and Associates on behalf of Knights Landing West. And first thing we'll do is have the staff presentation.
Hey. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. My name is Ryan Wells of Ad Terrarium Consulting. I'm the consulting planner for the town of Bartonville. And I'll be giving the staff presentation on the Knights Landing West Preliminary Plat. The project file number is P P two zero two three dash zero zero four. So this is a proposed preliminary plat to create fifteen residential lots and a public street on, with lots ranging from six to eight point three zero eight one acres in size. There would be constructed with this subdivision, a public street, a public water line, and the properties would be served by onsite sewer, essentially septic service for all parcels. So the project location, it is again one hundred and one point four six seven acres in size can originally comprising of four original tracts that would be subdivided and platted. It's located on the north side of East Jeter Road, approximately two thousand one hundred eighty five feet east of the intersection with county, country court. So I'm going straight into the approval criteria rather than listing the approval criteria and then repeating them again. I'm just kind of diving into the four approval criteria for a preliminary plat that are listed in the Bartonville Development Ordinance. The first criterion is whether that the proposed preliminary plat conforms to with the approved land study or other studies and plans that the city holds. So this fifteen lot subdivision would be served off a minor collector which connects existing rights of way on the north and south side. So you got Hat Creek Court on the north and East Jeter Road on the south. And so this road would connect the two, basically providing some circulation with your, for your transportation system. They would also provide a public water line easement connecting existing eight inch water lines again in East Jeter Road and Hat Creek Court, providing essential connectivity and looping of the water system. The sub proposed subdivision is proportionate to the available services in the area, both transportation and water. And there are some drainage easements shown on the plat. And we have some conditions of approval listed in the staff summary as well as this presentation that would reference back to those easements and the timing of their being established. The second criterion is whether the layout of required public improvements and town utilities have been approved by the town engineer. So at the preliminary plat stage, it's usually a pretty high level review of the utilities, just to make sure that they're all there, that they're generally appropriately sized and configured. And so the preliminary utility layout is acceptable. And as you know, concurrent with the submittal of a final plat application, they would have to provide full construction drawings for town engineer review. Although we do have some conditions of approval that would apply to that construction drawing set that relate to the location of hydrants and easements that would need to be met with that submittal. The third criterion is whether the plat conforms to the applicable zoning and other regulations. This property is zoned R E five, so there's a five acre minimum lot size. That zoning actually just took place last year. And so based on the plat that was ultimately submitted for planning and zoning commission consideration, all of the lots meet the lot width, frontage and other dimensional standards, as well as exceed the minimum five acre lot size. And finally, whether the ons, if it has onsite sewage facilities, which in this case it does, whether the plat has been reviewed by a registered sanitarian, there's a condition of approval proposed tonight that would basically ensure that that requirement that's in the code is being met at the appropriate time. So with those four criteria having been considered, staff do recommend approval of this preliminary plat with conditions. The recommended conditions of approval are as follows. Number one, prior to recordation of the final plat, the two offsite drainage easements depicted on the preliminary plat, which are shown kind of on the south, eastern southeastern portion of the plat shall be recorded as separate instruments, meaning that they're separate documents that are recorded separately from the plat. The recording number for the easements added to the plat shall be added to the plat prior to recording. Alternately, the easements can be established via the Knights Landing West plat by revising the label to read by this plat, which is the nomenclature you need to establish an easement with the recording of the plat itself. But I also want you guys to understand that the timing of the easement dedication is also a condition of approval for the Knights Crest plat. So that was the original four acre, I'm sorry, four lot plat that you guys approved earlier. And you might recall that there was a condition saying that those offsite easements needed to be recorded before that one could be established because they both depend on those eat, those drainage easements for drainage of the, of the surface, surface flow. So if, if we waited for this plat to be recorded in order for those easements to be established, that would delay the Knights Crest plat from moving forward. So it would be probably appropriate for the applicant to get those recorded as separate easements. Get those on the books. And so both of those plaques that depend on the easements would, would be basically valid and legal and able to move forward because this is a condition for both of those different plaques. Number two, is that on the final?
So what you're saying is until both of them are recorded, neither one of them can go forward.
Until the offsite drainage easements are recorded.
Okay.
Then both of those plaques can otherwise move forward.
Okay.
But if, if they wanted to just record those easements with this plat, it would delay the other one next door. Uh, number two is that on the final plat, the drainage easement labels on block two lot three shall be adjusted so they don't overlap. That's really just a Scrivener's correction to make it more legible. Number three, and this goes back to the, the septic number, the, the approval criteria and number four about the septic review. Prior to recordation of the final plat, the plat and accompanying planning materials shall be reviewed and approved by the registered sanitarian for the town of Bartonville in accordance with Title Thirty, Texas Administrative Code, Chapter Two Eighty Five, Section Two Eighty Five Point Four C. So this is a, a new, I have to say probably more correct interpretation of this approval criterion where rather than before the final plat is recorded, the septic system plans are reviewed by the sanitarian. A new reading of this, of this Texas Administrative Code section basically states that the registered sanitarian just has to review the plat to make sure that it's suitable to accommodate septic systems. And so that's how we're wording the condition of approval in this case. So there are a few more here. Number four is a complete engineering and construction plan set shall accompany the final plat. That's again just straight from the code, but it's good to reiterate that in the conditions. Number five is that the engineering or construction plan set shall show fire hydrant spacing that meets the Denton County E S D number one spacing standards. They do show fire hydrants on the preliminary utility plan. But we just want to make sure that the E S D is comfortable with the fire hydrant spacing with the full construction set. And then number six, accompanying the final plat application shall be copies of letters from applicable local utility companies stating that each utility company has reviewed the plat and stating any requirements, including easements that they may have in accordance with the appropriate section of the Bartonville Development Ordinance. Number seven, on the final plat, there's a correction on some notes that need to be taking place. Number eight, on the final plat, the approval signature box shall read final plat. Again, just a very little detail. And finally, on the final plat, all signature lines shall be dated twenty twenty four. They submitted this in twenty three. Sometimes you miss that stuff. So it's just, hey, helping you out. Make it twenty twenty four. So it's, it's valid. If those are all the conditions of approval on this preliminary plat, I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
On site sewage, what do they, what exactly does that mean? Does that mean each individual lot? Or is there a, okay.
Yeah, that's a basic septic systems. That's right.
Each, each lot.
Each lot would have its own onsite septic system. It's not served by sewer in this area.
I have a question that doesn't affect this, but it's in here. And I want to know if this is the gas well or what is being referred to where it said subject property is part of a former ag tract, but it says save an apparent energy installation near its northwest corner. Is that a gas well or what are you talking?
Looks like a gas well. I, I, I'm not sure. I just, based on aerial imagery, it appeared that there's some sort of utility installation on one of the future parcels. I wanted to make note of that.
Well, is it plugged? I mean, that's, I believe that's a gas well.
Yeah.
And if it is, there's.
They would have to, they would have to decommission it before they could build.
Right. We've got rules about how close you can build and all that stuff.
That's right. Yeah, but when we did the Knights Crest, I pointed out that because it's all the original properties, all one property, right? I pointed out that that was observed in my review and they said that they reviewed the, um, I think it's actually the Texas Railroad Association that maintains an inventory of those gas, gas lines and gas wells. And there wasn't actually anything in their records, but there's clearly something on the ground. I didn't do any site.
That's a seals well. That's not on their property. I don't believe.
Based on the aerial imagery, it appears to be on the subject property. If the applicant, can I pull up a, a Google Maps or something like that so that they could see? It's, it's pretty evidently on their property unless the property lines are way off. But I really, I really doubt it. I mean, it's, it's right there. I can just.
We usually hear about when they cap a well.
This right here, this is on the subject property. This is the property line. This installation right here is on the subject property. Based on, based on, if you look at the Denton County G I S, it shows the property line is right here. You can see there's kind of a clear, clear property demarcation in the aerial. The property goes like this. And this is basically lot. I have to go back and look at the exhibits, but I could tell you. Well, this is in a different order. It's one of the lots in the subdivision. Let me see.
Can you move that map? West? If that's not a gas well, then there's got to be a gas well. No. See that road that comes off Gibbons Road? If you go right there, you could down, that's the access off of Gibbons Road to a well. So we certainly need to find out whether that well is active or not.
And again, we, we, I mentioned this in the, in my correspondence related to the Knights Crest. Even though this didn't fall on the Knights Crest property, but we still noted it and pointed out that it was there and they, they stated that it wasn't an active well or anything and.
We need to make that as another condition and someone that status is, we're gonna make a difference.
No, it's not part of our platform.
Yeah, and I think there's probably state laws that would apply in that case anyway.
A bunch of it, just like our old and so too. Our business has not as many teeth as it used to because of the passage of a house built for us over years ago. And so.
Is that where we, where we had? You can't build within so much? Is, and we had six hundred, I think they may have dropped to.
I remember the exact numbers, but that's where it is. It's in chapter thirty two of our zoning ordinance. So that'll come into play at the right time.
Okay.
But it doesn't.
When does that get addressed in this process?
When they want to build.
Okay.
So just based on my, based on aerial imagery, that well is right here. If you can see the cursor moving. It's located right there. And again, so you have that demarcation that's evident in the aerial imagery right there, that kind of corner. If we go back to the map, this is that corner right there.
So this is a preliminary request.
Preliminary.
So, so more detail will come out when the final comes up and we could just do a side note that let's shed more light on what this is for us.
Yeah, so preliminary plat establishes the, the standards by which the final plat will be developed. The final plat is what becomes the legal document. Even with the final plat, they could record the final plat with the well in place just before they were to build a home in proximity of that well, I believe. And Ed maybe knows better, would know, but definitely know better than I would what the railroad commission would require, what kind of decommissioning activities. But in my opinion, it shouldn't deter or slow down the ability of that plat to move forward.
Questions? Everybody good with this? Okay, can I have a motion recommending, recommending to council approval?
Unless I wouldn't recommend council approval with the conditions as stated.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. It's interesting that did not show up on the railroad commissions.
It is.
Thing. It should, even if it's capped, they don't just take it away off, you know, from the railroad committee.
They actually provided a report from the road commission with their Knights Crest preliminary plat that said there, there was nothing there. Yeah.
Well, isn't that interesting? Well, they, you know, they don't even check a well unless there's something bad happens. They don't know how many wells they have, but that's old enough that they should. Okay. Number two, discuss and make a recommendation regarding a preliminary plat for a fourteen point seven two two acre tract or parcel of land situated on lot one R block A of the Yeti Edition in the town of Bartonville, Denton County, Texas. The subject property is located on the south side of I T Neely Road, approximately two hundred feet west of its intersection with F M four oh seven. The property address is one zero zero one I T Neely Road. The applicant is Kara King of the John R McAdams Company, Inc. on behalf of the reserve at Marty B's, town of Bartonville, P P two zero two four dash zero zero one. Staff.
Thanks. So there, this, this property actually has three applications for you tonight. There's a preliminary plat and a final plat which were submitted concurrently, and we'll talk about that here in a moment. And then after that, we'll be talking about a site plan. But I understand that the applicant representative is here and they'll be presenting after my staff presentation at this stage of the presentation. If they, that's not correct, they can clarify with Shannon. All right, so I'm going to, for the sake of brevity, go over the preliminary and final plat together because they're really very similar in how we evaluate them. And so this is the reserve at Marty B's preliminary and final plat. The Bartonville project numbers are P P two zero two four dash zero zero one and F P two zero two four dash zero zero one. So the applicant had submitted a preliminary and final plat to replat a set fourteen point seven two two acre piece of property to establish public drainage and waterline easements and abandon two co-serve easements on the property. So because the drainage and waterline easements are considered public, based on the Bartonville Development Ordinance, it has to be a preliminary and final plat, even though it's otherwise a relatively simple process. Generally, this kind of thing could be done in a replat, which is an administrative process, but because there's an establishment of public easements, it explicitly says in the code, it has to be a preliminary and final plat. Also, the Bartonville Development Ordinance states that if allowed by the city, the applicant can submit, could submit a preliminary and final plat at the same time, which is functionally a little bit difficult because usually you look at a preliminary plat, figure out if it's right or wrong, establish conditions, and then apply those conditions to the final plat. But again, because this really started out as a pretty simple process, we felt we could probably navigate it well enough so that it could go through the preliminary and final plat process at the same time. So the project location, it's located on fourteen point seven two two acres and it's one original already platted parcel. It's located on the south side of I T Neely Drive, approximately two hundred feet west of its intersection with F M four oh seven, right just across the street from Marty B's. So for a preliminary plat, there are four approval criteria. Number one is whether it conforms with the approved land study or other studies and plans. And as I said before, the applicant submitted a site plan about the same time as they submitted the plat. And the Bartonville Development Ordinance says that submittal of a site plan qualifies as, as a land study or accompanying plan for the, for the preliminary plat. So with that in mind, we find that the site plan aligns with the, I'm sorry, the preliminary plat aligns with the site plan that was, that was submitted. Criterion on two is whether the layouts of required public improvements and town utilities have been approved by the town engineer. In this case, there is a, a water, public water line going through the property serving fire hydrants. And there's also a sewer easement, sewer line within a sewer easement because this property is actually served by sewer. The preliminary layout is acceptable to the town engineer. They did a preliminary review and stated that they, they find it acceptable. They are actually reviewing the full construction plans right now as well. The drainage and water easements will support the new infrastructure as far as size and location. There are also floodplain and floodway easements shown on the plat because a portion of this property is located within. the 100-year floodplain as well as the floodway. Floodway is, has a higher level of regulation. The floodplain is kind of the edge of the, of the flooded area in a, in a large storm. And we have conditions of approval related to, uh, observed easement conflicts on the plat. Number three is whether the plat conforms to the applicable zoning, uh, and other regulations. The current zoning of this property is village center and it has a pretty robust list of requirements and regulations. And so we had to go through, look at the plat and the layout of the site to determine if it met all those regulations. Uh, staff have found that, uh, with one exception, the dimensional standards of all of all the requirements of the Village Center zoning district were met. Uh, there is lack of one 20-foot setback on the eastern property line, uh, next to where the 711 is right there. That's a different piece of property. So you have to have a setback from that property line. I think they probably disregard that because it was probably originally a larger piece of property and they just didn't see that distinction. But if you have two pieces of property, all property lines need to have a setback. And so we just note that here. We have that as a condition of approval on the final plat to correct. Uh, and then there are some special dimensional standards in the Village Center zoning district, which are a little bit interesting that in short say that if the, if a building is, is higher than 15 feet, then you have to have an extra setback from any residential property of five feet for every one foot of height. So we had to kind of look at where the buildings were, how tall they were, do some calculations. That was all evaluated at the site plan level. But just know that that's as, as a special dimensional standard, it's al- also met with this whole site layout. And then number four onsite sewage facilities, because this is actually served by sewer, that criterion doesn't apply. Moving over to the final plat, again, they look pretty much the same. There are a couple of little different notes here and there that they have to put. Um, so as far as a criterion, number one, does it conform with the approved preliminary plat? You know, concurrently submitted in this case, uh, yes, it aligns with the preliminary plat. Number two is whether the complete engineering and construction plans have been submitted for a review and approval by the towns engineer. Um, right now they are under review by the town engineer. They have not yet been approved, but they were submitted at the same time the final plat was submitted. And we have conditions of approval, again, related to those easement conflicts, which I'll point out in a moment. Oops, I'm sorry. Uh, criterion number three is whether the plat conforms to applicable zoning and other regulations. Again, zoning is village center. It meets all the dimensional standards except for that one 20-foot side yard setback along the property line with Lot 2 Block A. And finally, number four, with onsite sewage facilities is not applicable. So with those, those criteria in mind, uh, the staff recommendation is for the preliminary plat, PP 2024-001 to be approved with conditions. And with the final plat, FP 2024-001 to be approved with conditions. The recommended conditions of approval on the preliminary plat are as follows. That the proposed utility easement shall be relocated adjacent and south of the proposed drainage easement that runs along IT Neely Drive. So just west of the western driveway into the site, there's a drainage easement that runs along the south side of IT Neely Drive. They also show a 10-foot utility easement overlapping that. And that just creates a conflict with installation, with maintenance, with proper function. And so we're just requiring them to move the utility easement just south and next to the drainage easement. It won't really mess with anything. It doesn't really affect their site plan at all. But it's just makes it so that you don't have utility companies boring and digging up your drainage, your, your bar ditch or whatever is right next to the road. Uh, number two is that the final plat shall contain, um, owner's declaration and surveyor certificate language that matches that listed under the Bartonville Development Ordinance. There's a little bit of discrepancy in what they put on their plat. The language that says, you know, um, dedicating right of way and, and easements and whatnot. There's a little bit of a different language that we have in our code. And we just want to make sure that they're putting what's in our code on the plat. It's functionally the same, but we're just trying to be specific. Uh, pri- number three is that prior to recordation, there shall be placed an additional clause under the owner's declaration to include additional cited language related to fire lanes. I didn't put the whole section here because it's a lo- like in a long paragraph. But basically there's a dedication statement for fire lanes and keeping them open and making sure that they aren't uh, a blocking emergency access. That's something you need to add to the plat. Number four, on the final plat, the floodplain language in note 13 shall be moved to the notes section and not be associated with the UTRWD easement section. That doesn't really apply in the final plat circumstance. The approval criteria for the final plat, once again, number one, they need to move that, uh, utility easement next to the drainage easement that I explained just, uh, a moment ago. Uh, number two is the owner's declaration language matching that, that's in the Bartonville Development Ordinance. And number three, uh, prior to recordation, an additional 20-foot wide building line shall be located along the shared property line with Lot 2 Block A, the Yeti Edition. So again, a 20-foot building setback away from the property line shared with the 711 right there on the corner. Um, that doesn't affect their site plan, but it is a requirement of the code. Number four is that prior to recordation, there shall be placed an additional clause under the owner's declaration to include additional cited language related to fire lanes. I explained that a moment ago. Number five, the final plat shall not be recorded without a signature from coserve assenting to the proposed easement vacations. According to the applicant, there are two coserve easements on the property that they are wanting to vacate. And because those easements are to the benefit of a third party, we need to make sure that the third party is okay with that because they may be depending on that for the location of, of utilities and whatnot. So they do have a spit, a spot on the easement for them to sign it. We just want to make sure that that's done before it's recorded. And then number six, in accordance with Bartonville, Bartonville Development Ordinance, Section 2.6.5, the final plat shall not be recorded until either A, all required public improvements have been constructed and accepted by the town, or B, the town has received an appropriate surety from the applicant guaranteeing the construction of the required public improvements. Either is an acceptable option cited, cited directly from the code, but those would be required before the plat's actually recorded. That ends the presentation on both of those items. I'm happy to take any questions. I know a lot of technical jargon in that one. I apologize, but I'm happy to clarify anything that's, that we noted there.
Rick, I see a look on your face.
I'm just thinking through.
Oh.
I, I was just looking at some of the adjacent, thinking through the adjacent properties and just seeing if there's any impact on, on them. Um, but I didn't identify anything when I was reading.
Yeah, and I think, I think we'll get into more of that with the site plan because again, the plat is ministerial. It checks the boxes. It really is something that should be approved unless there's something egregiously incorrect with it. The site plan is where you're going to really be able to evaluate the impacts to the neighbors with the layout and function of the site.
That's where, that's what I was thinking when you said that. So, thanks.
Anyone have any questions before I bring up the applicant for their presentation? Okay. You're on.
Good evening. My name is Justin Lansdowne. I'm with McAdams, 201 Country View Drive, Roanoke, Texas, 76262. I'm not Kara King. I'm filling in for Kara King tonight. Uh, I work with her on a daily basis and Marty is also here to answer any questions that I may not be able to. Only have one PowerPoint, kind of encompasses the preliminary plat, final plat and the site plan. And as mentioned, the site plan kind of goes in conjunction with the preliminary plat, shows how it aligns. And I appreciate Ryan, the detailed analysis he, uh, just presented. So sites here on the south side of IT Neely, behind the 711, just south of, uh, Marty B's existing restaurant. Zoomed in version of the aerial. You know, of the 14 acres, there's a good portion of that 14 acres that's traversed by an overhead power line and floodplain. So of that 14 acres, there's only a portion of it that can actually be developed. And that portion that's being developed is there north of the overhead, um, power lines. This was our original concept plan. It was presented to the, uh, town a while back. Chapel, there's gravel parking proposed on the south side that runs through the overhead power line easement. It's a copy of the preliminary plat showing the 10-foot utility easement Ryan had mentioned that is, uh, look, we'd be willing to relocate as requested. The east side of the preliminary plat showing the easements. The replat, you see the whole property as one. You can see the floodplain down there, down there in the southeast side, and then the easements that are being dedicated for the water sewer storms, the water sanitary sewer, storm sewer, infrastructure, fire lane easement. This is a, this is a, the site plan that has been submitted. You can see there the, the, the main building venue in the chapel. The portion of the parking that is on the north side of the facilities will be constructed of concrete, while the south side of the parking on the south side of the facilities is intended to be constructed with gravel. The dark hatch is the fire lane. Going down to a turnaround in the dumpster there in the rear, roundabout in front of the main facility. You get, the existing trees are shown on this and you can see there just southwest of the chapel, the, the, the smaller building. Uh, a lot of those existing trees are being preserved and worked into the, the, the grading and layout of the site to preserve the natural beauty of the property. It's a copy of some of the, uh, the elevations. It's the front elevation. Or side elevations of the main facility. The rear elevation. Materials detailed. Floor plan of the main facility showing the seating. The chapel elevations, front, the front of the chapel. Side. Rear. Some of that, um, there on that west side with that, uh, that uh, elevated landing area under the doors is, is, is done to preserve that, those natural trees that'll be down at the ground level there. Other side of the chapel. Floor plan of the chapel. Our photometric plan showing the foot candles and the lighting meeting the town standards. And then an overall utility plan showing the, the water line that'll go through the site, site being served by public sanitary sewer connects off IT Neely, serves the development and the, um, storm drainage easement that conveys the drainage from the northwest through the site down across the overhead power line easement into the floodplain. I'd be happy to answer any questions or expand on anything you'd like me to. And if there's something I can't answer, so Marty's here as well.
Since you're here, I, I, there was reference to a future building. I couldn't find it on your map anyplace. I'm sure it's there. Could you show me where that is with, on that nice picture where you can see where all the buildings are?
Is it the, the future building that you'd be referring to?
Accessory building?
It, I, I believe it's the chapel or there on the.
Your accessory building right there.
Where?
Just south, just southwest of the main facility.
Okay. Well, I obviously couldn't find it.
It's kind of light.
Wasn't in dark enough lights. And so the, what I'm looking at, that darkness is the cement road, right?
The, so the dark hatch you see is the fire lane, which is concrete. And everything north of the building will also be concrete. But that dark hatch you're looking at is the fire lane.
So that, um, eastern arm of that dead ends against what?
Ties into the driveway for 711.
Okay. Gotcha. I don't have any more questions at this point. Anybody?
Yes, any of the conditions that we've, that he, that he went through? Are, are any of those a problem for you at all? Okay.
I have to say, I'm amazed that you could do what you did. Every time I go by there, I think, how is he going to do this? I mean, this is, this is neat.
From the ugliest piece of property in Bartonville, you're doing something good on it. Or at least the most property with the most issues to try to do something with it.
I'm still wondering why I bought it. But thinking of it.
Well, it looks like it so far.
Yeah, it does.
Are there, uh, any more questions for anybody or for Ryan? Are you comfortable and ready to make a motion to approve?
Reminder that I'll still be giving the staff presentation on the site plan. We'll get into some of those details.
Let's do the, let's do the preliminary plat first.
So we, we do them separate?
Yes.
Yeah. I recommend a council approval of the preliminary plat plan with conditions.
Thank you.
Favor? Opposed, zero. Okay, item number three. Discuss and make recommendation regarding a final plat for a 14.722 acre tract of or parcel of land situated on Lot 1R Block A of the Yeti Edition in the town of Bartonville, Denton County, Texas. The subject property is located on the south side of IT Neely, approximately 200 feet west of its intersection with FM 407. The property address is 1001 IT Neely Road. The applicant is Kara King of the John R. McAdams Company, Inc. on behalf of the reserve at Marty B's, Town of Bartonville, FP 2024-01. Staff.
So you just described the final plat, didn't you?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I gave the presentation for preliminary and final plat, so you can move to the motion on that one.
Okay. Hang on a minute. I have to look for my yellow marks. There isn't anything different between these two, correct? Other, I mean, we've already put on the preliminary the requirements for the final. Those same requirements will go on the final to move on to council. And between now and then, they'll have stuff written and ready or done or changed or whatever?
Generally, we don't ask them to change it, but we carry those same conditions of approval to the, to the town council, especially since town council is next Tuesday. I mean, there's not, give me time for us to even evaluate any changes. So the changes that are applicable to the final plat from the preliminary plat, those conditions are also in the list of conditions for the final plat.
So I doubt if anybody has any more questions at this point. Can I have a, a motion, please?
That we recommend approval of the final plat with the conditions as stated.
I second that.
All in favor? Opposed, zero. Okay. Item number four. A public hearing. Discuss and make a recommendation regarding a resolution approving a site plan on a 14.722 acre tract or parcel of land situated on Lot 1R Block A of the Yeti Edition in the town of Bartonville, Denton County, Texas. The subject property is located on the south side of IT Neely Road, approximately 200 feet west of its intersection with FM 407. The property address is 1001 IT Neely Road. The applicant is Kara King of the John R. McAdams Company, Inc. on behalf of the reserve of Marty B's. Town of Bartonville, SP 2023-001. Town of Bartonville, SP twenty twenty three dash zero zero five. Back to you, Ryan.
Okay. No, it was actually submitted in twenty twenty three. Yeah, the, uh, the preliminary and final plot were submitted in January, so that's why it has that different number. Okay, so I'll be giving the staff presentation for the Reserve at Marty B's site plan, uh, project file number SP twenty twenty three dash zero zero five. So once again, uh, this is a site plan for an event center, uh, as described by the applicant. Uh, this use was actually approved for the Village Center zoning district through a conditional use per, permit. Ordinance seven five four dash twenty three approved in August of twenty twenty three. Uh, as shown by the applicant's representative, uh, the site. Primarily contains a ten thousand seven hundred twenty three square foot event center. And a three thousand one hundred ninety nine square foot chapel, among other site amenities. So the project site is fourteen point seven two two acres. It's a single parcel on the south side of IT Neely Road, sorry, Drive. And it's approximately two hundred feet west of the intersection with FM four oh seven, just across from Marty B's. So there are fifteen approval criteria for a site plan. I just picked the ones that actually have any applicability. To what's being proposed tonight because a site plan can also apply to something that has a. Larger size, more complex design, things like that. So we just are focusing on the ones. That apply to this type of, of, of site. So these approval criteria are whether it meets the zoning district standards. It's, uh, harmonious and designed with adjacent uses. That'll provide safe and efficient vehicular and pedestrian system. That has adequate off-street parking facilities. That the streets are designed to accommodate traffic and emergency response. That the landscaping provides adequate buffers, that the exterior lighting provides safety and minimizes glare. That there's a protection of water courses and areas subject to flooding. If there's adequate capacity for water and sewer. And to note that the decision-making body may impose additional reasonable conditions where necessary. So we're going to go really briefly through those applicable criteria and how, uh, staff review has, uh, determined their, they are compatible with. The, uh, the requirements of the code. So staff have found that the site plan meets all of the Village Center zoning district standards. In particular, the special dimensional standards based on the building height that I mentioned earlier. So if a building is more than fifteen feet, they have to be set back from a residential zone. Um, five feet for every one foot of building height, which means that the, uh, the. Uh, meeting center and the chapel being higher than that, they had their own specific. Height setback distances, which is described here. I don't know them off the top of my head, but just know that they are. Further back from the residential properties on the western side. Uh, than, than the minimum requirement based on the code. Uh, the next is that it provides a high-quality facade design. You can see that it, it shows pretty high-quality, uh, materials. It blends with the landscaping to create an attractive development. There are sufficient setbacks from the residential development to provide a certain level of harmony with the quality of life. And lifestyle of those residential users to the, to the west. It meets driveway spacing standards along IT Neely. And provides internal pedestrian connections, but I will note there's no sidewalks in IT Neely. And so there's no connection to a sidewalk, but once you're on the site, once you're parked in your car, there are a number of. Of pedestrian pathways and sidewalks to get to the various buildings and, and activity spaces. Number five is that based on the applicants, and I'll give a little bit of explanation on this one, based on the applicant's, uh, information. The minimum parking requirement for the site would be ninety nine spaces. And the applicant provides two hundred and twenty three spaces. Seventy seven of those spaces are concrete paved. The rest are what I would expect to be gravel or compacted flex space, so it's a porous design. Now, this minimum parking calculation is based on the, uh, provided number of seats for the event center. Which is two hundred and ninety six seats. The standard for this type of use based on the, uh, Bartonville zoning ordinance is. One's parking space for every three seats of an activity or indoor recreational use. So that means that based on the seating in the event center, there would be ninety nine parking spaces minimum required. But of course, there's the chapel right next door. And that shows two hundred and six seats in the chapel as shown in the site plan just provided by the applicant. If they were to add those required as. Concurrent or, or a, a, additional parking spaces, that would be an additional sixty nine, uh. Parking spaces required for a total of a hundred and sixty eight. However. If you look at the function of the site, if you see that there's an event space and a chapel. You're probably not going to have somebody holding a wedding while there's a corporate party next door. I would assume, and the applicant can reiterate or confirm this, that both buildings are going to be used by the same group. That you're going to have a wedding in the chapel and go for the reception in the event center. That's my assumption, just common sense and. Uh, so generally in that kind of circumstance, when there's multiple buildings on a site that are going to be. Used at the same time by one group, you look at the building with the highest occupancy with the highest parking demand and that sets your minimum. So generally unless. You know, verified otherwise by the applicant or somebody on the planning and zoning commission. Generally, that ninety nine parking space requirement would serve as the minimum parking space requirement. And they're providing two hundred and twenty three parking spaces altogether. Now, one thing I do also want to provide, uh, in this, I, the, I did not, did not get a chance to convey this to the applicant, but I want to let you guys know. In a, in a more recent review of the technical standards for off-street parking. It states in item B that once minimum parking requirements have been met. Based on use per section seventeen point six and under the standard set forth in subsection A. An alternative material for excess parking may be considered and approved as part of the site plan. So what that means is that the, the parking spaces that are required to meet the minimum, which my, my impression would be that that's ninety nine. Those ninety nine parking spaces need to be paved with either asphalt or concrete. Anything above that minimum can be gravel or flex space. And I will note once again that they provide on their site plan seventy seven concrete paved parking spaces, so. My recommendation would be for you to either consider that as adequate or. A strict interpretation of this technical standard would be that they'd need to pave ninety nine of those two hundred and twenty three parking spaces. The remainder being flex space or, or gravel or whatnot. So I want to provide that clarification, apologies to the applicant for not having put that in the staff summary, but. This was a more recent review of the technical standards and I found that. So moving on. Do you have any questions on that before I move on, or do you want to come back to that in a, in a moment?
Technically, they should have ninety nine.
A minimum of a ninety nine. They can have more than that, and I think in this case that's prudent for them to have more than that. But the minimum from our code would be ninety nine. And the, those ninety nine should be paved with concrete or asphalt. The rest of them can be gravel or flex base and that's fine.
Is that our code that says they need to be concrete or is that a state code?
That's actually our code. It's, it's exhibits.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's exhibit, uh, appendix F of the zoning ordinance.
Ryan, can you just show on the picture where those would be? And then if, if it was increased from the seventy some, the nine.
I mean, I don't think it would be. I would necessarily need to point, tell them where they needed to do it.
Oh, okay.
And so as the applicant said, you can see here, basically this area of parking. From here over to here, this is all concrete. All this with that kind of a different background color. This is all showing to be gravel, so they could just throw, you know, a, a concrete pad here or just extend the concrete along here and just get to that ninety nine. Doesn't matter where, again, if you guys wanted to, you could maybe say that seventy seven is adequate, but again. The standard does say it would have to be the ninety nine. So, um. Went back a little bit. Okay, number six, uh, emergency access is provided via a dedicated, uh, fire lane. And, uh, all buildings in all fire access meets the fire hose lay requirement, uh, set by the E S D. In the preliminary and final plot, they actually dedicate a fire lane easement and then in the site plan, it actually shows that fire lane in that exact location. It's not working now. Okay, there we go. Uh, number eight regarding landscaping, uh, as you saw, they're providing, they're retaining some native landscaping, which is a rarity. In most commercial developments, that's nice, and they also just provide a, a heavy and diverse landscaping scheme. Uh, we do have a condition of approval recommended for some residential buffer landscaping. Which is a requirement in the village commercial zoning district. We'll get to that in a moment. Uh, they provide adequate lighting. There's a condition of approval to minimize glare on adjacent residential properties. Again, a requirement of the, uh, the lighting standards as well as the village center, uh, zoning district. There's a condition of approval for floodplain protection, although there is also a floodplain easement on the plat as we saw previously. Uh, we do find that there are adequate water and sewer connections at, in IT Neely Drive to serve the proposed, uh, development. And there are some, as I said, there are some conditions of approval that are recommended to mitigate some of the perceived or anticipated impacts from the use. So with that in mind, with that review, uh, staff does recommend approval of the site plan with conditions as follows. I'm gonna probably not read every single word here, but I'm going to give you the gist of it, unless you'd like me to read this verbatim. What would be your preference?
Oh, skip all the numbers and stuff. We've, we've done those three or four times now.
Yeah, so number one is that all parking area lighting needs to be installed and operated so as not to reflect or shine on adjacent properties. In accordance with the Bartonville zoning ordinance. Um, basically you have to have fully shielded lighting. And, uh, the parking light poles need to be set back from shared boundaries from, with residential uses equal to their height. So ba- basically, if you have a. Six-foot residential fence and if you have like a fifteen-foot parking lot light pole right there, you're going to be glaring. Into that person's backyard and because they do butt up to some residential properties on the, on the west side, we're just trying to be mindful of that. So that's one of the conditions. Number two, again, related to that same dynamic. Uh, a landscape buffer shall be located on the site along the concrete and gravel parking areas adjacent to lot five block D of Hudson Hills. So this landscaping plan shall be subject to the following standards. They need to put a brick or masonry wall with stucco or mortar along that shared property line. That's going to mitigate noise, it's going to mitigate light and glare. Number two, the landscape setbacks will consist of a minimum of twenty five feet of landscape buffer. And then they need to have understory plants. And number three, native shade trees, a minimum of three inches, uh, DBH diameter at breast height. Um, as measured four feet above the ground, um, need to be planted at one tree per four hundred square feet of the buffer area. Those are directly out of the, um, the Bartonville zoning ordinance for the village center zone. That's a requirement of a commercial property being adjacent to a residential property, so they're going to need to. They're going to need to somehow accommodate that in their site plan to provide that buffer. So that those Hudson Hills residences aren't unduly impacted by this activ, this, uh, this non, this non-residential or commercial use. A few more others. Prior to issuance of any building permit for the site, the final plat needs to be recorded. Number four, the future accessory building needs to comply with the Bartonville zoning ordinance. Section twelve point two B, which basically dictates where that accessory building needs to be in relation to the principal building of the event center. And finally, in order to protect the flood capacity and natural resource values of the floodplain. A floodplain easement shall be established to encompass the entire one hundred-year floodplain. That's shown on the final plat, so we know that that one will be satisfied with the recording of the plat. But because it's all coming at you at one time, we're cross-referencing and making sure our bases are covered. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any additional questions.
After. During the, um. I have questions, but later. That's easy, easy said. Do you, uh, want to ask any questions first?
Is that because you have some questions? We'll have a chance to do more questions later on because there'll be another approval process?
No, I just mean we have a public hearing to have and I'm thinking of opening it and. Closing it since there's nobody here to do it and then ask further questions unless during the public hearing they want to speak. So we will open the public hearing at eight o'clock. And is there, do you want to speak during the public hearing or do you want to take questions afterwards? I do not see. Or do I have someone who wants to speak? It's nice to see somebody here. Thank you for coming. Um. Since there's no one to speak at the public hearing, I will close it at eight oh. One. When it's eight oh one, it'll close. Okay. Um, I think that clock's broken. It won't go to eight oh one. Okay, good enough. I have questions. I'm assuming you guys have questions, so we have Ryan here and we have. Everybody out there that can answer it too. So go for it. Okay, questions? No, no, I don't want to go first.
I don't really have, I was going to say go ahead.
Okay, um. There's a couple of things I would like to ask. Marty, you're probably the best one to answer this and that is. Do you have any plans to have? Both those buildings you, you know, s- something come up where you have one person use one building and one. Somebody else be in the chapel at the same time.
Marty Brown, nine one three Hat Creek Court, Bartonville, Texas, seven six two two six. Um, I hadn't really thought that much about it. Um, the primary use is going to be as a wedding venue and so ultimately those uses will be filled, you know, simultaneously. I suspect there may be times early in the week where, you know, depending on the size of the group, there may be one being used in one. But I don't envision a time where they're both being occupied. Um, just because of the way we built the space, you know, the event center is meant to service the chapel, you know, for those people filling out of that, so. Um, I don't. I don't think that's my, that is not my intention, uh, to do that.
Um. Because that makes a big difference in parking. You probably heard that. Would you put that in writing? That it wasn't going to be used. At the same time for different groups and reasons?
Okay, so you were asking me to put in writing limitations on my ability to grow my sales. And pay for the huge amount of money that's going to cost me to build this facility, not knowing exactly how this is going to play out. I'm not comfortable doing that, Gloria.
Well, my, what, what we're looking at here is requiring more parking. You're over, but your pavement would have to be different. If we have to consider parking for two buildings instead of one, that's where I'm trying to get.
Well, even if we, we have two hundred and twenty three parking spaces.
Right.
So even if we chose to have an event going in both. Of course, Ryan knows the math. I don't know what the difference is going to be, but it's, it's going to be pretty close. Um, to that.
It's a hundred and sixty eight, so you're still over what the requirement is. I'm not disputing that. What we have to look at though is if we're considering that one sixty eight because. Buildings would be used separately than the. Part that has to be paved over is different.
Well, if, Ryan, do you want to speak to that? Cause if it's one per three, we have ninety nine for two hundred and ninety six seats. We would then need another hundred.
Sixty nine for the two hundred and six seats in the chapel.
So even if I do have the two events going on independently, I've still got sufficient parking.
Yeah, I, I think the clarification that Gloria is trying to find is the way that the code is written. Um, and I think that, that you would have some discretion in this case, Gloria. The way the code is written, if you're determining that that hundred and sixty eight spaces is your minimum, because they're both independent facilities. The way that's written is that the minimum number of parking spaces listed needs to be paved. Anything over that minimum can be gravel. listed needs to be paved. Anything over that minimum can be gravel.
I understand, but I mean, there's, there's only so much revenue that can be generated. And at the end of the day, as a smart business person, I have to really think about what can I build, you know? And if, and if the town is wanting me to pave all these additional parking spaces that we've already allocated at Marty B's, it's basically no different than what we have at Marty B's, the way and look of it, especially if adding the paved parking to get to 99 means you're gonna have paved parking behind the facility. There's no optical benefit from that because if you're looking at the space, it doesn't matter. Personally, personally, the whole vagina, the whole goal of Bartonville is to keep our town country. Do you know how awesome it is when I get out of my truck and I step on gravel in my parking lot? I feel like I'm in the country, and I think it's one of the things that benefits our town to be able to have commercial use of space that doesn't feel like fireman. There's a reason I haven't built anything from the ground up in Fireman. You know, and I, y'all know, I just dealt with Argyle, and I love doing business in Bartonville. Okay, but also I wanna exercise common sense and practicality as we think about me building a business, as you all have said, in a very challenged piece of property that sat there for many, 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 many years before I came to town. Six years after I came to town, it sat there. I was the only guy that was willing to buy it, and I'm buying it, and I'm making it amazing. And we've already made concessions for how we can lay this thing out that doesn't disrupt the community, doesn't disrupt the rural feel that we're trying to stay with here, and that's one of the things I love about being in the town. But I just would ask that you be logically minded as we think about it. Certainly, we could all go with the lay of the land of all the rules and all the things that are there, but, you know, at the end of the day, I wanna build a business that generates a lot of sales tax and that makes me a great living. Otherwise, why would I be doing it? And so I also wanna be sensitive to the people that are gonna be using the space, right?
So, number one, I want to tell you I'm asking these questions because we can't simply pretend like, like our ordinances don't exist. That doesn't mean waivers or whatever is needed if this body felt that needed to be done can be done. Nobody is trying to hang you up here, but you have to realize we're a body sitting here that has, that are given a set of what the ordinances are. I have to figure out where we are here, and if we do need to address something or not, nobody's going after you or trying to make you feel like we're trying to make you not successful, but we cannot just simply pretend like that's not written there. We have to have things laid out, and we have to know that we're following ordinances and accommodating when we can both.
Sure. So. And, and as the person who's footing the bill, I have to make sure it's a reasonable and wise investment. And that's the reality. The only other thing I would say as it relates to the conditions is that we currently, Ryan, you said that we would need a seven-foot masonry wall. Where we have on both of my properties that currently sit within the village center guidelines, Marty B's, Marty B's Coffee, we've got stone columns and we've got railing, the black railing that separates me from an existing neighborhood. And the whole purpose of a wall is to create, you know, a border between the neighborhood Hudson Hills that's back there. And so my hope would be that, you know, we could have of an alternative solution that matches what we currently have. It just goes with the lay of the land. And then I'd be way more open to having more of a vegetative wall along that like we have at Marty B's and the coffee shop. Because, you know, a seven-foot masonry wall, I don't know that there was one that exists in the town of Bartonville outside of the Saddle Brook entrance. So it just kinda stays in line with the rural settings of the town.
I have a question for you, Ryan, on that. Do we not have that as also a part of choices in separating us from areas of residential? Why, why we did not grant, to my knowledge, any kind of waiver or anything for those columns and wrought iron things that are there on the whole rest of that law, line, line between that village center and Hudson Hills?
Yeah, I would, had nothing, no part in that, so I don't really know what those conversations were. I was simply citing this portion of the, of the village center code that says that the wall needs to be a minimum of six feet in height, except for the first 25 feet from the street can be stepped down to four feet. And the brick or masonry wall with stucco or mortar wash finish, both exterior finishes being the same, shall be constructed along the property line. That's what, that's what it says. And then it also says that there needs to be that 25-foot landscape buffer inside of that. So the wall and the landscape buffer, that, that's what the village center says when it, when you're located along a property line adjacent to an existing or proposed residential use.
I.
I'm not the one that's supposed to have the discretion. I'm just the, I'm just the policy wonk that describes what the code says.
I know that. I'm just trying to remember. I thought we fixed that.
That apply with our fence ordinances?
Well, the fence ordinance doesn't apply. This is a, this is a common area.
Screen.
Sorry, screen. I can't remember what happened.
This is.
So I haven't been out there, Marty. What you're saying is that there's no masonry wall right now on Marty B's next to the.
Yes, sir, Ned, if, when we did this whole thing back in the 2016, 17, what we did is we just wanted to follow the same style of fence that currently existed within the Bartonville Town Center as it currently sits. And so when we were wanting to do the wall, we're like, well, why shouldn't we just do a continuation all the way across Marty B's?
I don't remember the procedure that we.
I think we did a variance, if my memory serves me.
A point of adjustment?
Yes, sir.
Then that's what has to happen here too.
Would that have to be a variance? We couldn't do a waiver on that?
Well.
Okay. Okay.
That's different than the technical standards we were just talking about for the paving.
So, so the fence thing would, just saying that we wanted the variance, you know, it's just in conversation here for that wrought iron. Would we approve it with a masonry wall and that he would have to apply for variance later?
That's one way, and the other way, I wanna say this is how we did it six years ago, but I just didn't get no. Or the other way is to get the, go for the variance application first and, you know, put this on hold. So that, cause then the variance process has gone through, and then this goes through. I think that's usually what we've done. Go through the variance process first. But it can, it can go either way, except that there's no variance.
You get a, after the fact variance on a.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You can do it. Prove everything tonight the way you wanna approve it, but we're stuck with the zoning ordinance provision about the screening wall, and then you have to go through the BOA process change that so it doesn't.
So is your schedule? How, I don't know what his timing is in trying to get this rolling, but how soon would he be able to go request a variance on that wall? I mean, I don't know what your calendar.
Are you asking me?
Either one of you.
So it, it depends. We have a, there's another variance request that just came in, so we basically just, they'd submit something quickly and we'd get it on the docket for the same BOA. ZBA, excuse me. I don't know what you're calling, yeah. Yeah, so, and this, and this site plan would be going, if you were to recommend approval tonight, this site plan would be going to council next Tuesday, so it's a quick turnaround of the site plan, so I would, I would hate to hold back his approval of the site otherwise. And, and, you know, for this item, I would, I would recommend going, getting your site plan approval, trying to work out that, that screening deal as a variance afterwards and, you know, kinda go with that. So it would just might be a matter of when we can get the ZBA scheduled and, and all that. Would.
There's no.
It sounds better.
Can I ask a dumb question? So if I'd, we approved the site plan tonight, and then we went through the variance process, a variance would had to be approved before a building permit could be issued. Is that true?
Not necessarily. I would say that this as a mitigation to the operation of the use would be, the variance would need to be satisfied and that issue concluded before a, before a certificate of occupancy.
Oh, sure.
Cause you're not really gonna be creating the noise and the, and the hubbub that would bother a residential neighbor until you're occupying that site. So you could do the construction, you could get your building permit and all that stuff. Variance would definitely be issued probably before you even had a building permit in hand, but I think that would be an appropriate order. Again, cause they're trying to get this thing moving. You see all the applications here tonight.
Sure.
It would be most appropriate in my mind to get this all approved, then retroactively try to fix whatever screening issue he might want to pursue as a, as a separate variance.
Yeah, as far as timeline goes, I mean, certainly my goal was May or June to kick the project off cause my goal is to try to be good at all done within a year to capture some of the summer weddings for next year. You know, but I, if I had, if I could just speak freely, you know, I would request two variances. One would be on the screening wall, the other would be on the parking.
Paving of the.
The paving of the parking.
And the parking, you could, you could approve a, a change in the requirement of the parking because that's under the, that's under a different ordinance.
So would that be us granting a waiver?
The technical.
It's not called a waiver, it's just a modification to.
Ed, the technical design standards are an appendix of the zoning, of the zoning code.
What is?
Yeah. The technical design standards that I was just citing off-street parking technical design standards, that's under, that's under the zoning ordinance.
Okay, variance.
So just.
Yeah. So we have variance for both of them?
Yeah.
And, and this is the first I'm seeing of the conditions you posted tonight, so.
Oh, they were in the staff summary that was provided.
Oh, I didn't.
Yeah.
I didn't get those. So my apologies. But other than that, I, I think everything else we plan to do, you know, I'm gonna exceed the guidelines on landscaping because it's gonna help define the space. We did rearrange the chapel to mitigate losing more trees. I think in this whole process of saving trees, I've given up almost 60 parking spaces. And I know how important parking is, trust me. Every time I add parking, I do more business. So anyway, I feel like we've done a lot of things to make the space amazing, to keep the, the, the country feel, keep all the trees, be sensitive to the neighbors. One of the reasons I'm covering the whole patio Marty B's is, is sensitivity, so. Thank you.
Um. Your accessory building's not gonna have more people in it, right?
No. You're talking about the chapel?
No, that proposed future accessory building.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't even think, is that on the plan?
It is on the site.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would just be for storage. No, because I only have, I have a small storage, and so I'm gonna need all that for fold-out tables, chairs, catering stuff. Yeah, we have a limited amount of storage in the actual facility.
I figured that's what it was.
That will not have extra people in it.
Okay.
Well.
You know.
Without me, I mean, yeah, it's not gonna have extra people in it for business. Now, if I'm loading stuff in there, there may be people in there, but.
No, you know what I mean.
Yeah.
The third, the third big celebration. No, that's all I needed to know about that. So we need to figure out what the what, where we are exactly according to the code on parking and pavement.
Yeah.
And then figure out what we wanna do.
If I could be so bold as to provide a recommendation related to the parking, I think based on what Marty said and what we probably all assumed about the site, there's a much higher likelihood that both buildings are gonna be used by the same party. It would be probably a very rare occasion where you might have two different things going on. You'd still have adequate parking, but for the bulk of the intended operation of the site, you're gonna be having one party use the chapel and then go over to the activity or the event center. So I would say that the 99 spaces would constitute the minimum parking for the site and a strict interpretation of the technical requirements would be that 99 spaces had to be paved. Now, if he wanted to go down to 77, that would be part of the variance request, but I wouldn't think that it would be prudent to require the 167 spaces to be paved.
I don't either.
That would be an overreach and.
We just need to do what has to happen in order for it not to be triggered.
That's right.
Is you gonna have to, you gonna have, would you have to cut down trees to make more parking?
He doesn't have to make more.
No.
Yeah, I think we're just talking about paved or gravel. No, sir. But I'd certainly rather pave less.
Of course. Show us. You know, if you go to BOA on this, they're gonna wanna know how come you don't wanna do it? And qualifications are reasons not because it costs you more money to do it. So show us where you would add that additional, and if it would have any effect on anything aesthetically or where trees are or something that if it's gravel, it would stay and all that. Is there anything that would be involved in that? If you had to do 99 instead of 77 with paving?
I mean, I think the reality is we're just talking about what's on the top of the space, whether it's gravel or whether it's concrete. We're not giving up or taking away any more parking, correct?
Okay.
So it's just, it's the same amount of parking, we're just saying.
Surface.
Yeah, and I, you know, one, I'm not an engineer, but I have relatively high common sense. You know, that the flex space provides for way better runoff and slows and absorbs, and it's, it helps provide for a better issue because we're going near the floodplain, and then we got all that stuff coming off the heels of Hudson Hills, so I just think for all practical purposes.
That's what you tell the board of adjustments.
That's right.
I mean.
And also, did you not say something about right now, all the paving is out in the front? And if you put it, put more right, well, I don't think that's the reason why we make him pave it.
You're talking about it creates a heat island out there if you didn't pave it, so.
Well, yeah, that's true.
Pull everything you can.
For me, it's kinda simple and for, if we or the board of adjustment, which I was on for a few years, is asked to make an exception from our ordinance, what's the common sense reason to make that exception? We heard cost is one, okay, which I've read very clearly from you and totally understand it. But, but I also, I didn't hear it clearly from y'all, but, you know, there's the need for more concrete could be, the concrete could be reduced because most likely the uses in the other facilities that are concreted or not, there's gonna be excess, you know? Are there concrete to go to? Just what's the common sense is what I was thinking of, of why to reduce it from the ordinance? Cause I think that's what BOA would want to. What's the reasoning other than cost?
Be advised that generally ruling by the BOA sets a new precedent for interpretation of the code in certain cases, so it would, you know, it would need to be a strong enough case. And Marty, I completely hear you and hope that they, they find that reasonable. When hearing a case of a similar nature, that they would be probably inclined to make that same ruling. Because that's the kind of the nature of the BOA. It's a little bit different than planning and zoning commission.
Right.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't quite go as far as all that, really legally. It's not as, it's not as rigid, so. At least that's when we have our BOA meetings, we, we talk about that too, but. at least that's when we have our BOA meetings, we, we talk about that too. But each, each location has its own characteristics and its own unique look and feel and all that kind of stuff. So I don't, I'm not as concerned about that. But for tonight, you've got not the BOA criteria, but you've got your site plan criteria. So.
So if we do it as is, do we have to? Do, do we not need to address it as the ninety-nine, not the seventy-seven? And then he asks for a variance? How do we deal with this when we make motions?
What's in the condition you recommend?
There's no condition related to the, to the parking?
Then just, then just ignore it. The code makes him have ninety-nine. And that's what he's going to be asking a variance to, to only pave seventy-seven. The code requires next to the screening wall, he's going to be asking variance to make the same kind of law in this, in this process. So for tonight, it's not, it's not one of the conditions you need to consider.
Okay, so on any, are there questions about any of these other conditions? And do you have questions? About the, the one that caught my eye has to do with a pole. Did you see, see that? Illumination standards, there's one pole on the northwestern boundary that's an issue up ag- again, up against Hudson. And apparently it's too bright and I don't know what else. It's all.
But what's in the plan or what's existing?
What's in the plan?
What's in the bill?
God.
That ought to be pretty fixable.
I would think so. I, I can't imagine that my lighting is going to be different than what I have at Marty B's currently, which matches and is next to a, a, a neighbor who's building behind me.
I'll cite, I'll, I'll quote the, the staff summary. It says, um, while the illumination standards for the site are generally met, the location of the light pole and light intensity along the site's northwestern boundary, which is shared with Lot Five Block D Hudson Hills exceeds the standards listed in Bartonville zoning ordinance, section twenty-eight point two. Proposed conditions of approval have been identified to mitigate these impacts, which essentially means, you know, for that light, you would need to have a shielded, um, light fixture. And it says all parking light poles shall be set back from shared boundaries with residential uses equal to their height. So that li- light pole specifically would need to be moved away from the, the property boundary so it doesn't glare, uh, into the back property of, of the Hudson Hills parcel.
Hey, I'm, I'm all for that. Yeah. The only other thing I would say, Ryan, as far as setting precedent is that there's not much more commercial space in Bartonville. So kind of at the ma- at the end of it.
Ed corrected me on that.
Dean, you're welcome.
I, I, I work with some other, other cities that, that have a little bit more of a strict, um, application of, of be, of ZBA rulings. So Ed kind of clarified that that's not the case here. I'll reiterate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I need you to clarify page forty, paragraph one, two, three, four, the one that says per BZO, whatever that is.
Bartonville's zoning ordinance.
Oh.
There's a, I'm differentiating the Bartonville zoning ordinance with the Bartonville development ordinance. Bartonville development ordinance regulates subdivisions, things of that nature. Bartonville zoning ordinance regulates land use setbacks, site plans, things of that nature.
So is this buffer thing?
From the zoning ordinance.
I know. It's from the, I just want to know, is it addressed down here in recommended things? Or what's this thing about? I mean, it says, um, meeting the residential compatibility requirements may cause the loss of parking spaces. So is it or isn't it? Going to, with what we're doing right now?
Well, so strict application of condition of approval two, which requires the, uh, the landscape buffer would basically move, if I go back to the presentation, can we go back to this site plan? Think I have a picture of it up there. One more. Yeah, okay. So let me show you. This is the Hudson Hills parcel that I'm talking about, Lot Five. And so this road actually doesn't really exist. It's just kind of old, I think it's old right of way or something, but the road kind of goes like that. So the property boundary is right here. And so from here, so a parking space is about twenty feet normally. So this is about twenty feet right here in the property line. Strict application of that requirement would mean that there'd maybe a screen wall from here to here. And then twenty-five feet buffer is vegetated with trees and stuff to block impacts to this residential lot. So that would impact some of these parking spaces. They could be scooted back. They could be relocated over here or something, but I'm just noting that it required twenty-five foot buffer would impact some of these parking spaces. Or could impact them depending on how it's going to be handled.
That former road must belong to Lot Five in Hudson.
I believe it does. So Barton, it's a Bartonville Water Supply, uh, act, the old Bartonville Water Supply access and utility easement.
Did they get, did they let, release that easement or did they keep it?
Everything I've seen, I believe it still exists.
It's, it's kind of tricky. It, it, it's hard to interpret, to be honest. I was looking at a couple of different maps, trying to figure it out.
Well, that road is what used to be access to the water tower. And when Hudson Hills came in, they didn't want cross timbers water driving across the back end of those lots. So they made a deal with cross timbers that cross timbers goes up IT Lee- Neely now to access the, um, in a different way to access the water tower when they have to go up there and work on it.
Ryan, you were saying that landscape buffer is, you know, the masonry screening and then twenty-five feet?
Yes, sir.
I don't have the exact distance, but that parking is approximately.
It looks to be about fifteen feet set back from the property line.
Yeah.
So if you look at this figure and you can't read it, but there's a fifty-foot building line. So if this is twenty feet, this is a fifty-foot building line from the property line, which suggests to me that even though there's an easement running through here, the actual property line is right here for that, for that Hudson Hills property. So this is the property line. This is a building line on the plat. This is an easement for the water supply company. It's all sorts of messy.
So that gap.
There's no gap. The Hudson Hills Lot Five terminates along this line here.
There's, there's a gap between the access easement and the property.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
That's right to your firm.
Right. Kind of funky.
But I can't build on it because it's a nee- there's an easement between the house area.
Property. Easement crosses the, the residential lot.
Right. And we don't know if that gap piece is easement too, correct? It doesn't show as an easement? I mean, that's like no man's land.
Which could be an argument in the BOA process.
Yes, but that would be another area I would ask for a variance from that twenty-five foot to fifteen, which is what the, otherwise I'm losing fifty parking spaces.
Yeah.
That would be.
And with that gap being kind of probably an undevelopable portion of that residential property, it adds to that distance. Basically, look, you know, do the rod iron and, 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 uh, columns, do fifteen feet of dense vegetation. You're not going to have headlights shining into that person's backyard. I would say it's a reasonable argument.
Hey.
All right. Have we sufficiently beaten, beaten this to death now?
But basically we said that those questions, the parking lot, if anything's going to be done on that, this issue, the wall, um, is all really going to go to a variance process through B of A. And so they will get the answers and they will ask the questions and because there's been some lack of kind of understanding on some of that clarity, then that will be spelled out with that.
Okay, so we tonight will be making a recommenda- recommendation to council on as is. Then Marty will go to BOA and deal with the issues at hand.
There's three in addition to what you talked about, but also the parking there. So he's got three different things to talk about.
Right, you know the three things that are going to trigger.
The screen wall parking thing.
Just on that northwest borders.
Okay.
Residential.
Where we are, we don't have any more questions, but since you guys were talking, I didn't want to go ahead and find out. There's something I nee- we need to know here.
He's going to add one point.
Okay, so I wouldn't want to necessarily make it a condition of approval, but we do need to note that the technical standards for, uh, the paving would require paving of ninety-nine spaces. Otherwise, it wouldn't be appropriate to recommend approval if they don't meet the technical sta- standards, okay? I, I hesitate to make it a condition of approval, but just simply a note in the recommendation that states like that the technical standards would require a minimum of ninety-nine spaces being paved. That gives him the trigger to actually request the variance in the first place. Because if it's silent, then he has nothing to request a variance against. He's going to ZBA for two other issues anyway. Then he'll have some language to point to and say, look, this is what we proposed and here's why. There you go.
So, um, at the end of five, you will just simply, when it's typed up to go to council, it would say, note, technical standards require paving ninety-nine parking spots. But not put a number on it so it doesn't be, doesn't become a condition?
I would say so. I, I'd, I'd find one of those items to just add it to. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. No- noting in the, I would just note in the staff summary for council that there, the, the, there would be ninety-nine parking spaces required for the standards.
All right. So we don't need to put that in at all. We don't with.
I'll take care of it.
Okay. Do I have a motion from somebody to do something at this point? Or do you have more questions? Are you comfortable? Are you uncomfortable?
Yeah. Uh, I'll go ahead and make a motion or recommend the council approval of the, uh, site plan with the conditions stated.
I have a second. Ralph. All in favor? Opposed, zero.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all.
All right, um, future agenda items.
Brian, thank you. Brian's really good. It's perfect in, uh, English.
Was that, was that English? The only item that I'm working on right now, uh, I should have had a little bit better prepared. I apologize. Um, we do have a, uh, a conditional use permit or a telecommunications tower that is, has been worked on for some time. Uh, it's behind the Kroger. Uh, and we're still evaluating the resubmital. Um, so not sure if it's necessarily going to come to the next month's meeting and you'll see if it does, but.
What was that again, Brian? I'm sorry.
Telecommunications.
Like telecommunications monopole tower.
That went through B, we had something like that go through B of A a year or two ago, right?
Yeah, but that was down on, south of Jeter.
Okay, different. Okay.
Yeah, this is.
It was the same company and everything, though, I think.
It's Hemp Hill.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was the Wolf Run one two years ago. Yeah, on the church property by.
And it got declined, I believe. So.
Yeah.
But this sounds different.
Yeah, this one is being proposed for the space behind the, I mean, it'd just be right over there behind the Kroger. So again, a conditional use permit, which is a discretionary item. Um, we're reviewing it. There were some additional, um, documents that they needed to provide to us. They just delivered those, I believe, last week or something. And so we're in the process of reviewing it and would do all the necessary noticing and whatnot. If they are deemed to have a complete application, we'll provide a recommendation ti- when the time comes. Anything else I'm working, working on is, uh, uh, administrative, so they wouldn't be coming back to you, uh, yet. So.
Right. I believe unless there's something else coming with, uh, future items that we are finished and we will adjourn at eight forty.
Hey, we're adjourned. We're off the record, right?
Correct.
I have a question.